December ninth, twenty twenty four. Uh, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast via local cable access channel WCAT on Zoom and on Facebook and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. Let's uh, if everybody can stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first thing is A and Rs. No A and Rs. Okay. Number four, discussion regarding potential concrete crushing at current gravel pit. It's you guys.
I have the podium.
Yeah, go to the podium.
Identify yourself.
Yeah, please identify yourself.
Andrew Merkin with Associated Building Records. Um, I'm interested in purchasing a piece of property in town. Seven twenty seven Brimfield Road in Warren. And uh, with me is one of the owners, Ron Cox. Basically, we're looking, right now it's an active gravel uh, pit with a, I think he's in two years. I have a five year permit. We're looking really as a lay down area for concrete disposal. We would bring clean concrete in, sometimes some brick. We'd bring our crushers in here and there, seasonal. I probably work my other pits two to three months a year. Uh, but we'd bring in the concrete. We have enough. We'd make some product. Uh, I brought a video of a, a short video of it. But we're looking to see if it's something we can do in town here. Uh, it's set off the road. If you've seen the property, it's pretty hidden. Uh, noise would not be a factor at all based on the location where, where it is. We would set up in the existing same footprint, which has been cleared out right now.
So is this Samix?
No. It's right down the road.
It was part of the old trailer park.
Oh, okay.
You know what I'm talking about, no?
I think so, yeah.
It's got, it's got the water sewer easement all the way up from Brimfield Route nineteen all the way up to uh, the Chiller Park.
Right, okay.
That's on the property. It's a hundred forty acre site. And it's about a five to seven acre area that's
Open right now.
Open right now. That's what we consider using.
All right, you're only allowed to have what, five acres open, right?
Right, five acres.
Yeah, that's just ballpark and it's five, whatever. But whatever's open now, that's good for us.
So you bring in concrete?
Yeah, we'd first level off the area.
Stow it until you have enough, then crush it, and what do you do with it?
We uh, we use it for backfill. We sell it. We, we uh, use it for demolition drives for backfilling cellar holes. People that have parking lots, if they don't, can't afford asphalt, they'll use this. They'll put it down at eight to twelve inches thick. You get no weeds, the drainage is great.
Recording in progress.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, but there's a lot of uses for it. And here, because we can, we can really dump clean concrete in one area, we can make a mass DOT spec for even the town, the highway department, you know, it'd be good stuff. Be good stuff.
Okay, so I think he's gonna have to apply for a new permit, first of all.
Right, because your permits aren't transferable.
They're not transferable.
They're not transferable. You'd have to apply for a new permit.
Okay.
It's a new operation, yeah. So I would, you wanna look at the bylaws? I think it might be section eight?
It is section eight, earth removal, yeah.
Earth removal. And so I guess the, probably the biggest thing in there is just gonna be the noise. If, I don't recall specifically what, what's in there for noise, but since you're gonna have a rock crusher.
Yeah.
Just sent your video. You should get that.
Yeah, these machines are newer and they're definitely sensitive to noise, how they make them nowadays.
Yeah, they're not like the old ones where you see them on TV making all that banging noise. They're very quiet.
Okay.
Yeah, it's running an excavator, taking down a building. There's no noise here.
What's the address?
Seven twenty seven Brimfield Road.
Guys, let me share.
So that's a that's our jaw crusher, the, the beige machine. That's our pit in Wilbraham. And that's feeding an impact crusher screener slash screener. And what's coming off the belt on the left is the inch and a half minus uh, material that we'd sell. So we're basically taking building rubble and making a good product. It's got a magnet on it. And we have pickers on the other crusher.
So that is relatively quiet.
Oh, it is. It is.
Mr. Chairman?
So it goes from this one to the green one, huh?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I request you to show a, a map of the location?
Yeah, sure.
I've uh
Are we done with the uh, video?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's the actual um, equipment you'd be using there?
That's exactly the equipment we use. Yep. I have another screener. That's only a screener. That green one in front's a screener slash impactor. So the screener is even quieter because it doesn't have any impact. So we could make different products with a different size screen. Wait here. I'll show you. I'm gonna pull it right up. Oh, okay. That's exactly what I did. So this is the area that we would uh, set up the crusher there. And they have, you can see there's a screening plan already, but exactly like that, we just, we level it off. We mix some of the material that's on site into our product too, uh, with the gravel permit. But yeah. Yeah, we're demolition guys. They use a little bit of dirt. We'd be more interested in crushing the concrete and using it for a lay down.
Okay.
The only thing I, I see every time I drive over there, there's you, you can't miss the mess.
Oh, it's cleaned up. That was from the logger. The logging guy pulled a bunch of logs out front and he was supposed to get rid of them all?
See, that neighbor over there, it's suffering from the views that really, no, the one above, the one on the
I think your stama over here, right?
Yeah, yeah, that guy, you, there's no buffer for him. I don't know what happened there.
My plan would be, I'd clean up the front and the trucks came up, where's the road? Right here, right? Yeah, so as the trucks came off, I'd have a fence here so I'll, I'll trucking it off the road. I put a fence across here. I'd have a different job trailer here. Uh, I'd camera it for safety. Uh, and like I said, and because we're not gonna be here that often, but that's what we were doing, clamp the fire.
Can you get the Google view? The street view over there? See, if, if you look at the new pit down the road over there, you can't even tell from the road it's there.
It's burned.
Because there's a big buffer. This one, it's, it is just, this is one of the main entrance to the town and it just looks so bad. Now that's the, go keep going.
Am I too far? I don't know if I'm past it.
I think you passed it, but I don't know. That's the trailer.
I think you gotta go that, the other way.
Backwards, yeah.
Turn around. Oops.
Three point turn.
Not touching it. We go back to this.
You can skip and then just drop it right there. Go back to the, to the map.
Yeah, that's probably right there.
Right here, probably, right? All right, can we get rid of this thing? All right.
See that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was all the, see all the logs?
That's
That was from the logging guy who pulled it all out front. He was supposed to get rid of all that. That's all gone now. That's all gone.
They gotta be green over there. It had to be trees over there, so we don't see it.
So what I would do, I'd have a fence way up in here. I don't know what to do with this, or then it'll, it'll be clean.
You just plant grass there. It's all, all that stuff's gone.
Anything that's not in use is supposed to be having, you're supposed to apply topsoil to it and seed it.
Okay.
So if it's not in use, it has to be seeded um, for erosion.
We can do that.
If you could keep going to the right.
We can, we could also put hard pack if you want.
See that house over there?
Uh, we want the greeny, the greenage of it.
Okay.
When we got this project, we talked about protecting this guy and he just gets a terrible view now. The backyard is, is just a pit.
Well, just until it's done in that area.
If I, if I was him, I would be pissed off.
There's still a buffer there.
Yeah, he's a
A buffer?
Yeah.
He's some of the uh, other equipment we'd have. We'd have excavator on site when we crush. We'd have hoppers uh, that collect the metal and any trash that might be mixed in with the demo debris, but there shouldn't be any, but if there is, we have that. Then we'd have some dumpsters open top, so we can put anything in there for recycling to haul it away. So we would have the equipment probably parked by where the trailer is at some point when we're not in use. And when we go in use, we walk it back up the hill. Everything's portable.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, go back to the map and, and zoom into behind that house.
Okay, let me do this. I'm gonna open up another one. Seven twenty seven.
Yeah, what you're talking about doing is you'd have to, you'd have to get a new permit. We'd have to have a public hearing about it, notify the abiders. And you would have to go down the checklist that would provide, to make sure that you provide all the documentation, site plans and everything.
Looks like the, part of the checklist, we start it, it gets submitted, then it gets rejected. Then at that reject, it goes for a special permit? Or is there a different process? I, I downloaded some stuff. I don't know if I got the right stuff.
Oh, that would be, yeah, you could go to um, the building inspector.
Yeah.
First.
Yeah, that's who rejects it, I think.
He'll tell you.
Yeah, he'll tell you if you need a special permit.
Right, and then it would come to us. But yeah, there's a, it's like a three page checklist or whatever. You go, you go through all of that.
Okay.
Oh, this is the house.
Zoom in and then go to the uh, the one without trees and we'll see the property line. Cause you know, usually no.
That's the house.
Yeah.
Yes, I understand. Just go to the, take satellite view, just go for map view.
Oh, like this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, how, how big is the buffer?
The property one's right here.
Yeah, right at the end of the shed.
So this is all their property?
Yes.
Okay.
So how much, how much are the buffers?
Okay, because you need a buffer, it's um, there's at least thirty feet from anything. I think it's a little on that, much more.
But I don't remember.
Well, you have an easement there too. You gotta remember there's an easement. The road's the easement, cause the water and sewer's on it. So you got, you got the water and sewer, then you have a little bit more dirt. So wherever that road is, yeah, there's the road. The easement follows that road the whole way. Is that correct, Ron?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's gotta be this one, right?
Nope. Yeah, that one. That one is the easement. As, as far as I remember, they were not supposed to cut any trees back there.
No, your station is right here. The generator and the uh, pump
Are over there.
Is right here. It follows this road. This is, then it connects back to here. Something like this.
Yep.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, so this is not utilized at all. In that area, we're talking about
See, to me, you know, the buffer was between the property and that road.
Well, if you, if you pull up the plans, cause that front area was for, to be exhibited, plus part of the top was a combine.
Rich, pan down and show them the new, the new pit. Goes out, just goes out, keep going. Look at that big buffer that we have to the road.
That, that was, that way years ago. I get that. I understand that. But if you continue to go down the road to Fountains, he's right on the street.
That's, that's the Fountains.
Yeah, that's the one he just
That's Mike's.
No, that's Fountains.
Yeah, he just permitted that not too long ago, right? The end of, or, or else it's, is that, that's, he's already done this much work?
Yeah, that's how much he's been doing.
Yeah, that's all over.
And we were very clear that we didn't want to see anything from the road.
I think in this case, you wouldn't see anything from the road. I mean, I couldn't even see the road standing.
Well, you also have to be so far away from a, a building and dwelling too with the permits.
Yeah.
Cause you remember, you're getting a new permit.
Yeah.
You're not on your old permit. Your permit's not transferable. So you would have to get your own permit.
Sure.
And go through the whole process. That means you would have to adhere to the current bylaws and what would be required. Cause your permits We've changed a lot of that stuff.
Yeah, all right, yeah.
So yeah, I would definitely read that section.
Where, where, where that be found? Is it current on the website now?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, under the planning board.
Show, show it on the screen.
Yep, planning board. Oops. You go to um, bylaws.
Yeah.
On the left.
Yeah.
And then you just want zoning bylaws.
It's, it's section eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, go through that, you know, make sure you understand and see what you gotta do.
Okay.
And how about the special permit? The list that's on yet to
The uh, the check, well, there's the site.
Procedural thing, that's right on.
Um, special permits.
This is what I download off that.
Okay, earth removal application fee. See, he doesn't need a site plan. We have um we have the site plan checklist, but that's, he doesn't have a site plan for this.
Oh, that's true.
Well, actually, he might.
We have
He's gonna need one because it's gonna show us the sit downs.
But that's for both
Yeah, but if you're in rural and you're doing something, you, if you need a special permit in rural, then you do a site plan. I'm pretty sure.
Could I use the current drawings that were submitted two years ago?
If they, yeah, I mean, just if they haven't changed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can later there.
But you gotta remember, if they're not compliant with our current bylaws, not gonna do you any gigs.
Yeah.
Because we're just gonna reject them.
Uh, okay, so rural, any use that requires a special permit needs a site plan. And any other non-residential use that involves construction? Okay, that's not you or enlargement of a building. Yeah, so you need site plan. So you know, just laying out where structures are gonna be and
Yeah, where we're gonna set up our crossing operation.
Yeah.
Lay down area.
And then you go down to eight.
With those, we look at where you are to the nearest buildings, dwellings.
Sure.
Because that you have to have setbacks from, from dwellings.
Section eight.
Yep, section eight. Um, you probably wanna check with conservation. I'm noticing it. The conservation commission has the right to participate. I would just, you know, again, you just wanna like, make sure you've got all your bases covered.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are there any wetlands there?
No, they, they participated in the, in the
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, just because they weren't wetlands there years ago, doesn't mean you didn't create a wetland by accident.
No, it was current, it was that um that auto parts place had just like been rejected and they had done a bunch of, remember all that?
Yeah, BHT.
Yeah, so it was, that was a hot item that everybody was onto at the point, at that point.
Okay, so where is yours? Oh, it's here. Okay, it's farther, far enough, it looks like from the um, there's a district here for uh, drinking water. But I think you're way away from that.
Yeah.
But again, I would check that too.
What is the setback from the, the property line? Was that in there?
Twenty feet. Where's it, no, it's, oh, that's to go down.
So you don't wanna be within two hundred feet of the public way. Or within two hundred fifty feet of a building or structure. So again, with your, on your site plan, you, you'd wanna put dimensions. So that house
Yeah.
The road, you know, do a radius.
Okay.
Um, so I guess it's not the property line, but it's the building, right?
Right, from the building.
So, yeah.
Now, these are new regulations.
No, actually, these, this stuff is probably been in there a long time. I, well, I don't know. I remember talking about this stuff. Maybe, you made, made the application last time?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we talked about some of this stuff.
Yeah, and the plans were, it showed where the earth removal was gonna happen.
Well, the earth removal, yeah, is way in the back, so that's probably okay.
No, it was, there was two sections.
Okay.
There was, it was to, to get the eighth ratio. There was the, the part in the front that you're concerned with, to take that down. Cause there was no access
Okay, there was like a little rise or something.
It was like, it was too narrow. You couldn't get
Okay.
Two vehicles side by side. So we wanted to take that knoll out. So that showed on the original plan. It absolutely did. I have a copy over in my office. Um, so
So that would have been like this here.
Yeah, so we would have to clear off, clean up a little bit of that.
Yeah.
But we would slope that hill, but we'd have to take out a little bit. It's not a lot of work.
Okay.
Uh, but I'll have to check the measurement from, is this the nearest house or is that the
Can I do measure?
It looks like you're gonna be driving right by that house there. How, how far do you think you're from that house? At the nearest point?
Well, probably eighty feet when you pull in. I mean, the, the driveway that's there, is that what you're talking about?
Okay, well, there's two sixty.
To the road.
Oh, now it's going backwards. Hold on a second. All right, well, there's two fifty feet.
So that would be for any of the equipment operating, is that the
Yeah.
So it doesn't
Let me see.
It wouldn't have affected the original earth removal thing?
Operations, yeah, so you don't want, you know
I wouldn't have an operation down there. There's not enough room, but I gotta take out some of the dirt there. The operation would only be up in here. That's exactly where it'd be. This would just be, I'd put my equipment, I could park my equipment off the road, so the road's still accessible. That's where my plan was, to put some stuff down here, near the trail, and camera it.
Okay.
But
There would be no operator there.
You definitely wanna make sure you go through that list and you comply with the bylaws.
Yeah.
And if you're not compliant, that you know why, because then you'd have to apply for a variance. Cause we're not gonna go against the bylaw. Um, we're gonna tell you, you're gonna need a variance. So if something's not compliant, just keep that in mind.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's better to stay within the bylaw, cause then you have to go through RUS, you have to go to ZPA. It's just a pain in the butt.
Mr. Chairman, see my, the issue I have is, that's a beautiful road. There's a farm on the right side coming into town. And you have the wetlands and all that. It is very nice. And I have nothing against the business of the pit. But this town needs to have a beautiful face. And if some, somebody is looking for business and the first thing you look at, you know, open site with dirt and everything, it's a bad sign. We can't sell to other businesses. It, it has to be a nice buffer. We have to respect the neighbors. Um, I, I don't, I, I hate to see that poor guy over there, you know, right at the edge of the property line. Right now, without the leaves, he's probably has a beautiful view of the dirt. And that wasn't supposed to happen.
Well, that, that's something we could address too, because if it does sell and transfer
Yeah.
Then we could address that
Yeah.
Um, with the new permit. Um, but you would have to comply with everything current now. Cause when you got yours, yours is kinda from years back.
Right.
So it, it's definitely changed since then. And just so you know, when you were new, you're gonna have to come into compliance.
It's, it's not really that hard to come into compliance. Went some grass, like I said, all those
It's vegetation too.
Yeah.
So it's natural buffer.
Yeah.
So you know, you're looking at putting in indigenous plants. Okay, not just throwing grass there, just, you know, wildflowers and stuff, stuff that would naturally grow there. So
Yeah, because definitely, if, Mr. Chairman, I am, I'm assuming that if they apply for a new permit, all those neighbors are gonna be notified and they may come here with some more issues.
Yeah.
Noise, views, you know, hours operation, all that. We're gonna have to address all that.
Yeah.
And that, that can be addressed with conditions on it too. All that written down for hours of operation. For seven o'clock.
I think that's
The hours of operation are in there too. What you can and can't work.
Yeah, we're seven, that's plenty. We're seven to four o'clock the latest, you know. Saturdays barely work Saturdays though. I wouldn't be crushing on a Saturday.
No, Sundays are holidays.
Oh, God, no.
Yeah.
That's all federal holidays. So Juneteenth too. We take more holidays than most.
So yeah, so I mean, read through that and look at the, the special permit checklist. And yeah, go through that and you can touch base with Laura and she could answer any questions you have, what you're in right direction.
I just wanna like, one of the things I saw in the application was to come in front of you guys. You gotta own the property. And I'm a potential buyer, but I don't wanna buy it if I can't do what I'm working to do.
Right.
I have to also go to the DEP. The DEP encourages things like this. You have to, a woman, there, right now there's a shortage of recycling places.
Okay.
So you gotta remember, we can't tell you, we gotta do something.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. We have to have a public hearing, public input, everything. We can't, we can't decide something until it's gone through until it's gone through a process.
Sure.
So we could tell you, you can put in, read the bylaws, if you think you have a good chance of it, you could talk to the building commissioner, and, you know, with Laura and it's, it's your risk.
Yeah.
You know, um, but we can't tell you, yeah, we'll approve you, go ahead and do it.
No, I get that.
Because that's wrong, we can't do that.
Mister Chairman, may I? Definitely, we are not against the business, just do it right. And especially, we're gonna protect the public, we're gonna protect the, the, the face of the town. We don't want people driving here and looking at all this ugly places, you know, like that one, to me, is very only to drive by right now. Honestly, it just fails the complete thing to sell the town for more business.
When's the last time you saw a buyer?
We are not against any business, as long as you do it.
Right, treat it like you live next to it.
Of course, hey, we talked to Wilbraham, Springfield, we, our two pits, no complaints ever, no complaints ever. Because we're not there that often, but we would clean up the front, and we'd have to present that, but I just wanna get the temperature of the water. He said absolutely no way we can do this here, you know, but he said there's a possibility if we're a good neighbor and we clean it up.
Yeah. Like I say, if, if you, if you drive by, you can't tell your, your operations over there, don't stop.
I don't think you can see it.
Well, right now, we can see a lot.
Well, he's just talking about.
Well, that's, you're talking about the, the.
Oh.
It's all gone. You can't see where the actual operation is gonna be, you're just seeing that.
Right, it's just the face, when I drive over there, it just looks like, oh, no.
Again, that's all gone.
Yeah, so, you know, grass or some bushes are provided.
The logger was supposed to clean it up, which was part of a cutting plan.
This is, this is the road right here?
Yeah, that's another, that's.
So that's a road there, and it's a road here, so the grass will normally have to be.
It's in the strip there, right?
Yeah, there definitely shouldn't be dirt piles sitting there in front of it.
I don't think that's even that one.
That's all gone.
It's all good.
So I think, what, when you decommission a site, because you're only allowed to have, I believe, total five acres open at a time. When you move on from that, you gotta decommission that site, and you gotta put topsoil on there and plant it.
Yep, that's in the bio.
You get a return.
How about hard pack, no Ford parking, up in the, in the landing area?
That, that goes within your site.
Within the acre.
And you get to identify that in your site plan where you're gonna have that. Because you're only allowed to have that amount open.
Is it five to seven? I think I read it's five to seven.
Five to seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's plenty big for the operation.
Right now, we're on about five acres of Wilbraham, and that would be, that would be more active than this site would ever be.
So, can we look at that site, Mister Chairman?
Eight, six, three is where, you know, if you move on to a different spot, that's what tells you, four inches of topsoil, vegetation, finished grade.
Yeah.
So that's what you're gonna look at as you finish up with a spot.
Mister Chairman? Could we possibly look at the Wilbraham site that they have?
Sure.
Absolutely.
You have an address?
Yeah, I wish I knew it, I'll tell me, it's like, I think it's like two, five, 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 if you Google Earth, that we can probably find it. And it's changed a lot by since the picture.
What street?
It's Boston Road, it's on Route twenty in Wilbraham, it's right next to the, uh, construction service. On Boston Road in Wilbraham.
What else, what else in?
I think it's two, three, five, five.
Where is it from Mandarin, Wilbraham?
Hmm?
Where is it from the Mandarin?
Is that the old restaurant?
The Chinese restaurant there, Mandarin, Wilbraham?
I don't know, I'm not familiar, I know where the, uh, you know, it's across from, uh, the recycling place, Western Recycling, I'm on the other side of the railroad track.
Oh, so you're near, um, the place that has all the.
Right by, by Indian Orchard, right? Uh, what is this?
Rocky Mountain.
I'm, I'm, I'm heading towards Springfield from Rocky Mountain, it doesn't look like our pit. They're almost across the country.
A lot of them open up over there.
Where's Route twenty, oh, probably, Bocima, Amray, oh.
This is our, this is our, this is that right here, so there's different tenants, but here's our pit right here.
This one here.
That's us, yeah.
Okay.
So we can come off here, and we can come out off a construction service, but this is our pit, right there. This is another contractor's pit, Gangi Duchi Construction, this is associated, and these piles are actually all gone now, now it's just, it's flat. It's all gone.
I'm surprised Wilbraham have so many, so condensed.
Yeah, I mean, this whole area is.
Yeah. That's like a.
But it's next to the railroad.
And you get the river right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not happening here.
No, no, it's a different.
You have a railroad, industrial area, no residents.
Our Springfield one's in a re, more residential neighborhood, it's got commercial and residential, but it backs up to another railroad track and a highway at the other side.
Warren is, is a lot smaller than the.
We have neighborhood meetings when we went through it, that was no problem.
Warren is a place with farms.
More farms.
And woods.
Rural. Much more rural than Springfield or Wilbraham.
Sound travels, so, we're there, you have a lot of commercial industrial noise. Here, something.
It's quieter.
Just the mass bike.
It's quiet and it travels. And people move here because of that quiet, so that's why we're concerned about the noise right off the bat. Yeah, we're not an everyday operation either, like, I say trust me, but it's a trust me, it's based on Wilbraham, based on Springfield, based on the hours on my equipment, because we don't crush a lot. Because we also still bring stuff into, you know, we go the closest truck and tow you, so if I'm past Worcester, I'm dumping out that way. If I'm in Connecticut, it stays in Connecticut, so, we have a lot of options, this is just another option for us as we get towards Sturbridge and Worcester versus doing everything to Wilbraham. We can maybe make some stuff here, and then we can make a good Connect, not Connect, mass DOT spec material. Our other two pits, we co-mingle everything, so it's a cheaper fill, because there's brick in it, no one wants brick. So with this, I could just bring good stuff, make nice material, and then it should move when I'm there, you know, for other high, for other jobs.
Okay. All right, so, are you good?
I think, I think so, I gotta do some research.
Yeah.
Right, I gotta do some research.
Yep.
Uh, well, yeah, you, you can drive into our pit anytime you want in Wilbraham. Uh, this is Monday through Friday, the gate's wide open off of Route twenty, we, we close it each night.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Uh, because we do have tents there. And parked trailers.
Yeah, there's a ton of them out here. Okay.
Well, thank you very much, you have any more questions?
Uh, let me see if I got any. Would you, well, no, I think I'm good, I'm good.
Okay.
You're good.
I appreciate your time.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, you got anything left? No, just the front's cleaned up. That, the logger pulled it out there, and I said, you gotta run, you didn't, because he was working out of the back, and he dragged it out there, he left it there, and then he retired and went to Maine, and we had to.
There's no buffer anymore, there's no buffer anymore, no natural buffer, trees are gone.
Oh, no, all that was already down, there was, there was no cutting in the front there, there was no cutting at all, because there was a house there before. I actually planted, uh, trees in front of the office, so you wouldn't see that, so we actually planted more trees than were there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, everyone.
All right, so next thing, public hearing continuance from July first, twenty twenty-four, on the application of John Hanley of eight one eight Little Rest Road, Brimfield, Mass, for special permit and site plan review to operate a micro-licensed cannabis cultivation facility at eight one eight Little Rest Road, Warren, um, to produce high-quality craft-grown cannabis emphasizing rare strains and to be sold to existing dispensaries under section fifteen point two and fifteen point three of the zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL chapter forty A, chapter twenty, oh, what? Chapter forty A pursuant to chapter twenty-two of the Acts of twenty twenty-two. This hearing will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Uh, I don't know, do I need to read this?
No.
Okay, so. Laura, can you give us an update on contact efforts for Mister John Hanley?
Sure.
Anybody Zoom?
I'll stop sharing. Is anybody on Zoom representing this permit application? Hearing none, okay, go ahead.
I'm not hearing anything, um, so this, uh, was a continuance from the July first hearing uh, for the special permit application, it was originally continued to September ninth. For the records that I inherited, it looks like on the ninth, um, or prior to the ninth, the applicant reached out uh, regarding a family emergency and asked to continue further on down, down the calendar year, so it was, the continuance was continued to this evening, um, since I have started, um, in late September, I have made probably half a dozen phone calls and email attempts to contact the applicant, just to say, you know, hey, we're into October now, just little ping reminder that, you know, this is coming up in December, and then, you know, more attempts closer to this evening, um, and have not heard from the applicant in my tenure. Um, and it looks like the most recent communication was from about early September, um, when he was speaking with my predecessor regarding, uh, continuing to December ninth. So I, I have not heard anything.
So you tried last week, right, a couple times?
Yes, um, I left multiple, well, voicemail box was full. Thursday afternoon, I was finally able to leave a voicemail, um, prior to that, the voicemail box uh, for the contact number had been full, uh, but multiple email messages as well to the email provided, which had been in communication with the office previously, so.
But you made multiple attempts to contact this person.
Yes.
And without any response at all.
Correct.
Over a period of a month and a half, two months, whatever.
Yep, including I checked in or attempted to check in earlier this afternoon, and then I also stopped and checked voicemail and email in the office prior to coming down here tonight. So as of about, I don't know, seven oh two PM, no communication from the applicant.
So Mister Chair, can I speak?
Yep.
So my recommendation now, it seems like the permit was abandoned, we've done our due diligence to reach out, I would recommend closing the public hearing and rendering a decision to deny the permit.
Okay, so, two pieces, we need to close the hearing.
Right.
And if you wanna vote tonight, then we have fourteen days to put the decision together.
I think we could do that.
Okay.
It's simple enough, because.
Okay.
There's no contact, we reached out.
All right, so let's take, uh, so, is there a motion on closing the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
Drew King, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye, all right, so the public hearing for eight one eight Little Rest Road, Warren, Mass is now closed. Is there a motion to vote on it?
I'll make a motion to deny the permit due to lack of response.
Second.
Okay, hold on a sec. Well, oh, you.
We, we just gotta finish up what we're doing here, and we can get back to you, you can sit down if you want.
What, what I would suggest is to add without prejudice, so that if he, if he wants to come back, he can come back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Otherwise, we block him out for two years, which I don't think is fair, I mean, they just have not been able to get his stuff together, so. All right. So, you still seconding?
Yes.
A motion without prejudice then?
Correct.
So, yeah, I'll make a motion to deny the, um, permit, um, based on lack of response and without prejudice.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
David Dufresne, aye.
Ed Longdigan, aye.
Drew King, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye, okay, so we've closed the hearing and denied permit without prejudice. All right.
Just one quick question.
Sure.
Okay, uh, since, we're talking about where we go from here.
I don't own the property, if I'm looking to buy the property, can I apply with my own money, my, for a permit, to go through the process, even though I'm not an owner, because in the bylaws, it says you have to own the land to ask?
You don't own it.
Correct, and, and I won't buy it unless we can go through the process and then, you know, hopefully, we do everything.
Again, go by the bylaw, if the bylaw says.
Where did you see that you have to own it, just?
I saw it somewhere, uh.
I mean, the owner of the land, oh, buddy, sorry.
Somewhere where the owner has to apply for the special permit of the land, it might be under special.
Might be under, yeah. Oh, boy.
Oh, here it is, on the application for earth removal.
Okay.
Uh, it said, the first line, I'm, evidence of ownership of the property from assessor's office, so, I don't own it.
Yeah. I mean.
Have you, have you run into this before?
No.
Everybody owns them.
No, everybody owns it.
But you can understand his.
Yeah.
Oh, it, it's a risk, but it's a risk you're taking.
I can't take the risk.
It's business. Yeah, every business has a risk, yeah.
You, you have the plans from the previous owner.
Yes.
You have the rules. Apply them there and see what it comes up.
Yeah.
You have to do a risk assessment for yourself.
We are not against businesses, they just need to apply all this.
Gotcha.
So, uh, you know, if I, if, Chairman, if you may, I can just go a little bit beyond the point.
Sure.
Definitely, you're gonna have, uh, you know, make that site look like there's nothing there when you drive it. The neighbors, a big buffer to them. Because right now, I was looking on the pictures and, and when you stand right in front of the house with all the trees, I could see through all that, and that's not nice for the neighbor, he might not be happy. So, that section over there is gonna have to be planted trees and all that stuff.
So those.
Trees might be tough on that hill with the sand, but would fence, privacy fence?
I would look at, I would look back at all the setbacks.
Yeah.
And the bylaw, and go by what the bylaw says.
Okay.
Uh, because if it says you're supposed to be two hundred and fifty feet from a dwelling, and you're a hundred and six, a hundred and forty, well, two hundred and forty-five, we're gonna push you back five feet, and you're gonna have to adjust to that, because we're gonna go by the bylaw. Uh, if you wanted to change that, you'd have to go to the ZBA and ask for variance. And I can't tell you that they're gonna go against the bylaw either. That's a risk you take, and it's a long process.
That's addressing.
There is no guarantees. I, we can't guarantee you something in here, if that's what you're looking for, all we can tell you is, as long as you're compliant with the bylaws, because that's what we're gonna look at, and we're gonna look at the aesthetic value of it, like Mister Belize says, if it looks like a dump, then we're gonna tell you to clean it up.
I'm looking to.
And we'll put that, we'll put that in conditions.
I'm looking to go through the process as someone that's in buy the property, once I do the, the homework on, on the setbacks, but I wanna go through the process, pay the money for the fees and this and that, versus buying it.
It's permitted to him, he's already got a permit there. So you'd have to take over the property and start a whole new permit.
So that'd be the.
Yeah, I don't know that I would apply for a permit with his ownership under, because I don't know.
No, we might.
He already has.
That's more risky for you even then. Because if you two fall out of an agreement, then he, I don't know, it just seems like a bad idea, so you wanna own the land, own the permit. You know, I think, right?
If it was a rejection, is there a, we?
Yeah, there's an appeal.
Okay.
So once we, uh, render a decision, then you have twenty days to appeal.
So most of it is stay within the law and you're gonna be okay?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and let's, I, I tried to explain to him that you guys are very reasonable in this town, as far as that stuff goes.
Yeah.
The, the bylaws are there to protect the residents and you.
Right.
It's, it's our code that we're going by, and.
And it allows for this.
The bylaws too, we can't tell you to do something that the bylaws are telling us, you can't.
the bylaws too. We can't tell you to do something that the bylaws are telling us you can't do.
Right.
You know, because that's wrong.
And you can't tell them not to do something that the bylaws do allow, right?
Right.
So.
So I think, you know, like what Derek is saying, and, and I understand with the house, but like if there were trees like arborvitae's here, right? It would hide a lot of, and granted, the logs are gone, but you still have like the dirt road and stuff like that. So that would help in this spot.
I don't think you can cover that road though.
What?
I don't, I. The road on the, so the road on the right is paved and is, is an easement. And that can be changed. The road on the left, I'm pretty sure that's still a common road.
I'm talking about like right in here.
Right, right. I just don't want you to expect the road on the left to be covered, because there's a, there's a bridge over there.
It's a road.
It actually shows as a road.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's right. I think just like cleaning up in the front here. And then I think what Derek is concerned.
Keep going, keep going.
Let me see. I mean, you can.
One more. Right there, zoom in.
So, you know, like you can see it back here. So if you could do something back here to make this person's backyard a little nicer, the view.
Right there, zoom in.
I mean, yeah.
Zoom in right there. See?
Right, so if there was something, you know, in here you could do, I don't know. I mean, we can't really go to it, but. Well, you gotta remember the setbacks are probably gonna push you back anyways.
Right.
So you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to restore that. So if you're thinking like, well, we, we're gonna lose road, well, you're probably gonna lose road anyways when we push you back because you're too close to the building.
So you can't, you can't lose that road that's there.
No, no.
Oh, no.
The road.
What?
That whole field that you got cut out and everything that's cleared out.
Are you talking about on the right what you're saying?
Yeah, I didn't think so. Can we go back to the other end? Right in the back of the house.
Yeah.
It's pretty close.
Well, that's, it is, and the pump station and everything is right there too. I don't know how you're not seeing that. But if you zoom in right to the right there, that's the pump station that goes up to the trip. These pictures are old. I haven't had that truck for two years now. So that's all part of the pump station. That stuff can't obviously be changed or anything.
No, that would be good too, if you come here, because we're very visual. You can see, we're very technical.
I can take pictures and that stuff.
And you take photos and you send us photos of the current conditions, what it actually looks like now. Yeah. That would help us.
Okay.
Because we're looking, like you said, dated photos. Things may have changed, but this is all we see.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, pan to the right, please.
Image capture, September twenty twenty-three, so over a year ago now.
Yep.
He's just panning.
I mean, that's all, the trees are all the way up to the road there, to, to our road, and the property line's three quarters of the way in there. Like their, her shed is like five feet from the property.
Yeah, I don't even see her shed.
It's behind the house.
So the, the setback refers to the gravel removal, I believe, right?
Anything cleared.
Anything cleared.
You have to have a natural buffer or where it's cleared. So you gotta keep that setback away from anything, any operations.
Okay, so you couldn't even, so for example, just, you can't park
Nope.
that anything where we'd set to the right of the road is pretty much dead property for me, when you're just, when I'm here.
Okay.
Gotcha. Because that looked like it might be within.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Yeah, you gotta make sure you keep away from that building and dwell, the buildings, and then you're gonna look at from, from the roads too. So this does say the word operations. It doesn't just say like, you know, gravel removal. It just says operations, so it's more generic.
Yeah, I could've swore that you could get closer to a property line. There's a more definitive area of how close you can get to a property line for gravel removal, otherwise you guys would have never approved that plan.
You were approved two years ago. But, but the thing is, the property lines diff, this is saying within a two fifty feet of a building.
For operations?
Yeah, yeah.
But not for removal? And that's why.
Operations. Yeah, minimum two fifty feet. Right? Anything, anything you're doing, you have to be two hundred and fifty feet away from a building. Yeah, that's what this is.
What's a two hundred feet?
Two hundred feet away from another structure. So the property, it doesn't matter where the, it doesn't matter where the property line is. This is saying from, so some, think of it as somebody's house. You just wanna be two hundred and fifty feet away from someone's house. The property line could be at the edge of the house, or it could be way, it could be five hundred, well, it could be five hundred feet, but you know, two hundred feet.
Well, and, and I'm not arguing the point. I'm just saying, when, when I was here and my plan got approved, it shows us removing that front section there, and I'm pretty sure it was based off my engineer going by the, the laws of how close you could be to properties and the, and the drop offs and everything. So I'm confused at the two hundred foot mark, but I think I'll, I'll look through the law.
Yeah, I mean, maybe look back at the plans and.
Yeah, I mean, but like, you guys approved it at the time, or the board did, so obviously it was, it was a legal operation to do that.
Right.
So how long ago did you get it? Two years?
Yeah, it wasn't that long ago.
Wasn't that long ago?
No, it wasn't.
That's why I'm like surprised at the two hundred.
So you're making us wonder now, because now you're causing us to wanna look at what your special permit says and what the decision is, because you might be in violation of your permit. Well, but if we, if we have proved the land.
We have to look at the decision and see what we have.
I mean, we could've made a mistake too.
Yeah. And.
You know.
Right, because I'm, we all make mistakes. And I just think somehow, I could've swore that there was a distance where you could do earth removal from.
And I, I remember, I was sitting over there and I remember saying very clear, I wanna keep that neighbor protected.
Yep.
And you cut the trees and you dig the ground, dig the, dig the land. Just saying.
And, and I understand that when we went by.
And we, as a planning board, we don't have authority to go and say, hey, you're not doing what we told you to do.
So Mar, can you pull the current permit that's for that property and send us a copy of it?
Of the decision.
The email, the decisions and what it, what it says, so we all could review that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, send them the plans to, please. Because I, I have the plans. I, I look at them all the time, but I actually showed them to him. And it's the plans that were submitted where we did.
But you gotta remember, the bylaw supersedes what you put in the plans.
Right, I, I get that.
You have to, you have to do your plans based on the bylaw.
Right, and my engineer did.
Didn't.
And, and my engineer did. I'm just, somewhere in the.
Mark up the drawing, the two fifty from the corner.
So, somewhere in the town's regulations on earth removal, it says how close you can be with the earth removal to a neighbor's boundary. I, I remember.
That's a boundary, but this is a dwelling.
Okay, and I think that part might've skipped by us, is what I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that you're wrong or I'm wrong or anything else. It just.
I mean, if you can, if you find something in here that's supporting something, then
Yeah, we'll go through it.
when you apply for the permit, you just need to like be able to defend what you've set up.
Right.
You know?
And, and obviously if the board already approved it, you can't really hold it against somebody else.
Well, he wouldn't be getting that anyways.
Huh?
He wouldn't be getting that anyways. He'd be applying for a whole new permit.
Right, right, right. So what I'm saying is if, if, if you would approve it, but the, the law says differently, obviously there'd have to be some correction there, but
Yeah.
you know, you can't bring back the dirt. It's gone.
But he, he would have to comply with what's current bylaw.
I understand that, yes.
Am I applying for two permits? Because ones, you have on your website the gravel removal permit, and then you have a special use permit, which I'm more interested in is for the concrete crushing, but I would do both, because I could use some of the dirt mixed in.
Yeah, then you'd have to do.
So, so two separate, two permits, they're kinda like both special permits, basically.
And then you'd have to do site plan approval, which is another form.
Got a lot of fees. Yeah, so I'm gonna start by, and then when we submit paperwork, it said eleven by seventeen inch pieces of paper, the plans, you don't prefer full set.
Whatever you want. Whatever the.
Because you can see if they're on a full set, this is a hundred forty acres.
Yeah, full sets are always better.
Let me tell you that this is an eleven by seventeen, but I can't read anything, so you'll be screwed up because I'll say I can't read it.
Yeah, I'd rather bring, I have a printer. I'd rather print a full set.
Yeah.
Everyone can see it.
And if you can send us a digital.
Digitally too.
Yeah, because then we can look at it, you know, before.
Before, instead of coming here and looking for.
For your first time, you wanna study it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, then we can pull it up too. So if we have questions, we can pull it right up on there. Yeah. Public and C two.
That's good.
It helps anybody if they're joining via Zoom, so they can see what we're explaining.
Okay. Appreciate it. So it sounds like pictures, do your homework, and.
Look at the old plans and the old permit, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And you can call with questions anytime, so.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you guys.
Alright.
Thank you.
So if, you know, if you get questions and you really get hung up on answers, you know, you can refer them to Jeff, to Bill, or if you want them to call me, that's fine.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And it's, haven't gotten really anything specific about stuff. I know with.
Yeah, I don't know. He, you know, he may end up.
And I know with Andy, his biggest sort of was like, this isn't technically like straight up gravel? Like is this something that would even like be considered to be allowed if it's concrete crushing, kind of like? Is that even something that would be considered, since it's not like a technical one-to-one gravel earth removal kind of thing?
We have to compare, because the only one that has concrete crushing would, would be Dave Callahan.
Yeah, so that was his sort of biggest, like, would this even be allowable?
Similar equipment are allowed, so. But they have to define where they're gonna be too. No, but I'm saying, it's not like he can't do that. But you gotta remember, he's also looking at storage, because he wants to bring in concrete material from other sites, from buildings.
And let it sit for months until they come in and they crush it.
And then crush it. It sounded like he was gonna bring it in, crush it and give it out.
No, no, he's gonna bring it in, store it, and then crush it and stuff.
So that's storage too.
If you can find that decision, just send it.
Absolutely, yeah, I made a note. Yeah, his biggest question was like, if I come in here and apply for a special permit and waste everyone's time, are they gonna laugh me out of the room upon first review? Like, is this, if this is something we'll consider, then I'll move forward. If that's something that like they will absolutely not consider and will ride me out of town on a rail if I apply, you know, I'm not gonna waste everyone's time. And I was like, works for me, bud, I'll come on out.
Alright, let's move on to Jane and CMRPC, the zoning diagnostic.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening.
Peter?
How am I, Ken? Uh, so I just wanted to come back to see if you had any questions or comments after the last time I presented the zoning diagnostic to the board. And to see if you had any information on the recommendations from some of the previous planning efforts, whether they still apply, whether they've been achieved or.
So we can, so first of all, under town staff, Jim Ferrara's name is spelled wrong. I think, do we, did you hear that?
I did not.
Oh, okay, so under staff. Um, Jim Ferrara's name is spelled wrong.
Oh. Okay.
Two Es and then an A. And so are you. Talking about, there's, so there's charts on pages two, three and four? Is that what you're?
Yes, under the status. I'm just, I mean, it doesn't have to be a detailed response. I'm just wondering, you know, if something has already been achieved, if it's something that maybe is not a priority any longer, or if it's something that is a higher priority and you still want to pursue.
So. We have a commercial district along Route sixty-seven and that covers the village centers. So on page two, I guess that would kind of cover the first three. I don't know. If these have a different central business, general business and highway business, I don't know if that makes a difference, those terms. But we certainly have just a general commercial.
Yeah, I noticed it was a village or commercial along Route sixty-seven.
Yeah, that would make. And I think the, the village allows for businesses.
Yeah, it does.
I, we have a light manufacturing district we don't really have, but we do have light manufacturing allowed in the two overlays. And probably the commercial too. I'd have to look at the definition of our commercial. The wireless communication facility overlay district, do we have an overlay district for that?
No. Wireless communication, no.
I think we do.
No, we don't.
No, so we don't have that. We just have general permitting, if you're gonna put up a a, a tower, just general permitting. Explore feasibility of more direct access to Route nine or to Interstate ninety. There's been nothing
No.
done with that. Update zoning bylaws to support commercial development. I think that's, I mean, I'm, maybe, maybe we can expand that, but I mean, there has been some work on that. And design guidelines and review process. I don't know. I don't think we, we may not, if we have it, it's within each section of the bylaw, would be my guess. There's nothing town-wide that says like, you know, here's what a sign should look like or.
No, it's in the bylaws.
Yeah.
Okay.
And on page three, update and revise subdivision regulations. I don't think those have been touched in a long time.
No, I don't think so either.
And revise zoning bylaws.
The subdivision regs, the cover says it was amended in two thousand and ten.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, fourteen years ago, yeah.
Way before any of us were on this board. Yeah. Uh, zoning bylaws to encourage reuse and redevelopment in village centers. I don't think anything like that has been done. So model bylaws for commercial, industrial development, historical and open space. I don't know that we have anything specifically addressing that kind of stuff, right?
Not for that, no, nothing specific.
Study and assess effective zoning strategies used by comparable towns. No, we have not done that. Consider revising zoning bylaws to include alternate or flexible methods. I don't know what that even means.
I don't know what that is. What is that?
Yeah, what is that?
Okay, so we don't have that. Revising zoning bylaws to create special economic overlays. I think the major development overlay district and the mill overlay district would be that. And then the next two are, I think the, it just got repeated in your table here.
Oh, you're right. You're right, okay. I will get rid of one of those.
So I, I'm pretty sure we do not have anything. That would do clustering or density bonuses.
You don't have, uh, I didn't review the guidelines again tonight, but it would be something like open space residential development that allows the clustering.
What do you mean by clustering? Like a cul-de-sac or?
No, suppose, um, suppose your minimum lot requirement is two acres. With the clustering, you might allow the homes to be built closer together on say half an acre, but for each home, you have to put another acre and a half into open space. It could be used by the residents, could have trails on it, it could just be left alone.
It's like a housing project.
Say that again.
Like a housing, drives that kind of thing with open space?
Correct. Correct.
I'm pretty sure we do not have anything.
Yeah, I don't think the town will really want something like that either.
Okay.
I think the town is content with being rural.
Yeah. Well, it might be like that guy who was talking about that little development on South Bridge Road, right, where he's gonna put in like a dozen houses.
Yeah, but he's.
So they'd be tighter together, but then you'd have more open space around it.
Well, he's already doing that anyways.
Yeah, but I mean, maybe encouraging more.
Pushing them apart a little bit. Because what you don't want is everybody densely packed into each other.
Yeah, right.
You know, that kind of gets away the aesthetics of the town and why people move here. And once you allow one, then it opens that door for more and more.
It does.
Yeah.
And then they're all over the place.
Yes, and then you become a city and not a town.
Right now, my house is in the village, and the minimum is fifteen thousand square feet, which is a third of an acre. And if you see that corner between South Bridge and Washington, those three houses are, they look the same, the same guy did it. They, he, he, he had a big site, and he cut it in three with one-third of an acre each.
Yeah.
That's even, it doesn't look that crowded either.
But that's in the village.
Where my, where my daughter lives in Connecticut, they have third acre lots, but everybody has two acres, and the other acreage is across the street, and is a very nice wooded area that people can walk and do all kinds of things in, so it doesn't feel confined. Just because of the way that it's arranged.
Okay, we don't have that.
Okay, yeah, so ultimately, yeah, we don't have that kind of stuff. Allow transfer of development rights. I don't think we have anything that allows transfer of development rights.
I don't think we do at all, no.
Seek MA smart growth slash sustainable development resources, no. Expand oversight role in funding of planning board and permitting? I mean, I'm not sure, we are the permitting authority for like everything, so I think we already.
We covered that.
We have already covered probably? I mean, unless, you know, there's other definitions we don't know about. Consider expanded special permit review slash approval. I guess we could, I don't.
Take on more?
Again, what does it look like? What, what does that really mean?
I think we, we already take on quite a bit. What else would we take on?
I'm not sure, yeah, so we may have this covered. Same with the next one, consider site plan and design review to ensure quality development. So we already have the site plan approval process. So for example.
The special permit, uh, review approval, expanding that, is more like a streamlined permitting where you allow, um, say like the site plan and special permit to be reviewed together, rather than having to come back each time you wanna request an entitlement.
So we.
We do pretty much do that.
Everybody, so, so like, and I don't know if you were listening to the, um, the thing with the, uh, the guy who wants to do rock crushing. He's gotta do a special permit and by, because he's in rural, he has rural, he has to do a site plan approval automatically. So he would come in with his special permit request and his site plan approval. We would open up both at the same time and close both at the same time. And we've done that.
I'm moved.
I'll double check the, um, this old planning document to see if that was the intent there.
Okay. And we've done that with other.
We've done that with solar, we've, I'm trying to think what else.
Everything.
Yeah, because we can't, uh, we can't approve, we can't approve a special permit unless we see the site plan.
And approve the site plan.
Let's approve the site plan, so we have to do both at the same time.
We never consider them separately.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good.
So page four, update and revise inventory of high priority potential conservation land. No, we don't have any inventory on that. Update and revise identification of land and watershed or environmentally sensitive areas. I don't think we have anything.
We have a watershed restriction zone, right?
For the wa, um, water departments?
But the water, it's the water departments that manage that, but it's something that should be, it should be placed in the.
Yeah, that's true, I mean, the Commons Pond.
But we, we don't really know where their restrictions are, or their.
Yeah, there's nothing like in the bylaws.
We don't have anything in the bylaws saying you can't do any of this within this area.
Yeah.
Probably should have, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
For this section, um, this will probably all be reviewed as part of the current master plan.
Okay.
There will be a, uh, open space, uh, natural resource chapter, or similar title.
Okay.
Looking through a little here, like, create agricultural districts, I mean, that would kind of be our rural. Bylaws to protect open space.
We're already looking at doing, um, a farm bylaw.
Yeah, right to, right to.
Right to farm.
Village center infill in the zoning bylaws. We don't have anything like that. Special permit review and approval in target protected areas. And site plan and design review to protect scenic view shed areas. I mean, we don't have anything specifically that would address these.
Okay.
I mean, we do have things like, uh, what are they called? The roads, certain roads, scenic roads, I mean, that's the only kind of.
And that hasn't been updated in a long time either.
No, it hasn't, no.
Because there's a lot of scenic roads in this town that probably should be considered scenic roads. And that are not.
But we, I don't think we have any specific zoning bylaws, if you live on a scenic road, you know.
We do.
Yeah, but does it say like what you should do if you're gonna do?
It says you have to maintain the setbacks. There are things, because we were talking about that before because of the Pepsi trailer.
That is a scenic road and.
And that is a scenic road.
We're talking about entering towns and how we want it to look now.
Yeah, I know.
No.
Alright, and then the final, is this, let's see, at least on page four, right? Yeah, okay, the final. Consider revising zoning bylaws to create historical districts or cultural slash art districts. I mean, we could, I guess, we don't have anything like that. Personally, I would kind of be careful with historical districts, sometimes you get in a situation where you can't paint your house.
Problems for people, and they cause problems for residents, because it restricts them what they could do on their homes.
Yeah, so I'd like to see language around that.
In art districts, I think we're a small town that.
I'm not sure what that even means, really, so.
I think that's more Cambridge and places like that, not, not Warren. We get a blue collar kind of crowd here in the town, you know, working folk that, you know.
Yeah, I, at this point, I don't think we need that, I mean, we don't, we have a.
An art district, no.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we don't have enough space for anything right now.
Think the only art district that we got is the, the guy that's, um, ah, jeez, I forget the road name. Uh, going from Warren, Center of Warren to Westbrook Field, when you go past the high school, there's that farm up there, and the guy that has all the carvings, statues.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I love that.
That's nice.
Dorman, Dorman.
Dorman, Kevin Dorman.
Yeah, yeah.
Good job, you just put out a spooky the beer.
Yeah.
Looks good.
That's our art disparate.
That's our art district.
Zoning bylaws to allow parks and recreation on uses, or uses on expanded sensitive zones. We don't have anything like that, I guess that might be good, like to do a river walk through, you know, or something like that, I don't know if that would.
We've talked about that too, extending along the river.
Yeah.
Opening it up to, to people so they can fish, because that's all overgrown here.
Yep.
And if we could do a, a walk going all the way down, that would be very nice.
That would be great.
Yeah. Consider site plan and design review, uh, to protect cultural landscape areas. I don't know what that means, but.
Might be similar to your scenic road.
Okay.
Cultural landscape, I guess so.
I know in some communities with the scenic road, uh, bylaws, they, you know, won't let you take down old stone walls, you need to retain the existing vegetation, and then, just to try to keep as much of a natural look as possible.
Also, maybe like on a hill, like Mark's Mount, you don't want somebody to like clear it and put a house on top or something, so you.
Something that would restrict that kind of thing. Okay. So on page five, you've got this map. The only thing I saw about it is there was no legend, it was very hard to understand what the map was trying to show.
Is that the surfaceal map?
The USGS. So I couldn't fit the map and the legend on the same page, and I believe the legend is on the next page.
Oh, it is. Okay, my next comment was this is.
Free.
And that's why, also in the footnote, I included the link to that site so that you can hopefully zoom into a better quality map, uh, through that website.
Alright. Let's get in an old verse.
I don't know, there's. This is November twenty twenty-four on the first page. Uh, you, did you send this out?
I did, and I, I searched it again in the lead up to this meeting, but it's the same, same document.
So if you pull up her email from Thursday, Wednesday?
Right, that's what I did.
Okay, then you got the right one.
On page five?
Which is page five, you printed it all out.
I'm looking at my page five.
Page five, the USGS.
Make sure it's the page five on the document, not on the PDF.
Surfaceicial material map.
PDF.
Right, but sometimes the PDF page numbers are different than the actual document.
Because I only got twenty-one pages, how many you got?
Twenty-two.
You just look at the last page, you don't have to count them all.
Well, no, they don't have numbers at the end.
Oh my god.
I'm looking at it right here, it says, yeah.
It stops at six, sixteen, and then there's a couple extra pages.
On the documents, the map, the USGS map.
I found that document, that map, to be very interesting, not only does it have the contours, but it tells you.
What type of material is on the surface, such as bedrock. Um, and so if you look in at potential development areas, you can, um, I know there was a concern from the Conservation Commission about steep slopes and, um, having some regulations for that. So I think if you take into consideration both the slopes and the surface material, that's gonna help the committee, uh, working on the zoning update to narrow down which areas maybe should be preserved, as opposed to which ones, you know, might be eligible for development.
Okay, yeah.
It's page eight for me.
Alright. So on document page eight, the hazard mitigation plan and the vulnerability preparedness, we're actually gonna talk a little bit later, um, in this meeting about, um, doing a ha, adding a hazard dam section to this, to the HMP. So I don't know if that matters for this, but.
That's something you're doing in house?
Or you're, uh, you've got a consulting on that?
Yeah, CMR.
Do you know if you're working on that?
Well.
Sarah right now.
Okay.
But I don't know the actual implementation of the hazard dam section, maybe somebody else.
Okay, got it.
I don't really know, she's the one who brought it up.
Then, um, so I had a question on page nine, which is under Warren Open Space and Recreation Plan. This says extend Lucy Stone Park to the northwest of Route sixty-seven on Boston Post Road, and potentially along the river. And I couldn't figure out exactly, and I can bring up a map, what was being dis, um.
But that's what Tim has been doing, I mean, expanding it, maybe put the trail in, because right along the river.
Yeah, but northwest is.
Northwest is past the, you know, on the other side of the river.
So I wasn't, okay.
Yeah, that's not Lucy, because I'm on the other side of the river.
I'll just share this. Oh, so where's Lucy Stone? Okay, so here's Lucy Stone. So it says northwest of Route sixty-seven on Boston Post Road. So.
Northwest is going other direction.
Right, northwest is this way.
Right.
And, but Boston Post Road is Washington Street. Right?
Uh, no, apparently sixty-seven, it's, it's, it's.
Okay.
Yeah, it's got, Mike, Mike's Auto, it's on Boston Post Road.
Right, but I thought Boston Post Road, okay, yeah.
The old Boston Post Road.
Yeah. Alright, so Jane, do you know what that was referring to? So here's Lucy Stone Park, right? Roughly in here, south of the river.
If you go to your left to pull up, yeah, go, knock the other way, go to the left.
Yeah, like in here.
No, move the whole map, so knock the other way.
That's right.
Yeah?
More.
More?
More, till you hit sixty-seven, minimize it.
Well, here's sixty-seven down here.
Sixty-seven right there. So if you're trying to move the park, I mean, expand it, you'd go from where it is now up, all the way up there to the river, and then over to sixty-seven, you cross the railroad tracks. Is any of the other conservation land right there?
Huge, uh, the conservation land is like right here, maybe?
Yeah.
Next to, um, Warren truck.
Alright, so you couldn't do that, because you'd end up crossing off.
And who owns all this land? I mean, some of this is, uh, the pump shop, some of it's the Housing Authority.
Yeah, anyway, that's just not feasible.
Okay. Yeah, so Jane, I don't know about that one, extending Lucy Park, Lucy Stone Park.
I'll go back into that document to see if there's more information about it, but, uh, it sounds like it's probably not feasible.
Yeah. It's just too big of an area, I think, right?
Okay.
Alright.
Oh, okay.
Page Warren Master Plan in Process, the second bullet, develop an overlay district for Wright's Mill, we have that. That is the Mill Conversion Overlay District, I think it's called.
Okay, um, and, let me see, does that not cover the mills in Warren Center?
Well, there, well, mills.
No, there are no mills in Warren.
There are no mills.
Okay.
The mills in Warren, well, that are near Warren Center are all occupied and, uh, being used.
Okay, okay.
By, uh, at least four or five different companies.
The mill, mill buildings, yeah.
So there's, um, the pump shop, there's another place called, um, Star X. Right, is there anything else? I mean, I think that's it.
That's all, right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or anything else on?
Reduce, the only thing I was looking at is reduce the erosion at Dean Park.
Where's that?
Develop strategy to reduce and mitigate erosion at Dean Park.
What section or what page?
Yeah.
Yeah, what page? Pick a page.
I go by my page.
Is it a bullet number?
It's a bullet.
Is it, or a list or a bullet?
It's a list of different things to do.
Yeah.
Identify trails, recreational areas, boating areas to map, and engage private landowners for permission to map trails, create additional parking locations at Carter Park, and the com.
Just above the Lucy Stone Park, uh, comment, like three bullets above it.
Oh, yeah, I see, alright, it's, it's above the Lucy Stone stuff, okay.
I see where it says reduce mitigate, I don't know if there's erosion at Dean Park, do you know where that came from, Jane?
Um, that would have been, something from the Open Space and Recreation Plan from two thousand twenty-two, which. Something from the Open Space and Recreation Plan from twenty twenty two, which I can go back into that document. That one is the old Open Space Plan.
Cause I didn't know we were. Erosion problems at Dean Park.
You know what it might be?
Is it the river cutting through?
Yeah, and it might be the basketball court.
It's opening its trunk.
I think there's problems here.
Back there.
Share.
Yeah, I think I remember hearing that this is an issue over here, so. It might help on that bullet point, just to make it more specific.
Probably identify that with, um, parks.
Yeah.
Cause if they have an erosion problem, we could probably get that fixed somehow. Too, so. But this has been going on for over two years now, so.
Yeah.
First time hearing of it.
Isn't that probably the problem from the beavers?
Well, this particular spot, I'm not sure. Spring, um.
Hang on, that's where the beavers are.
Oh, School Street Brook is, is that.
It's down more, yeah.
That's further away, I don't know. So this is a spot. And then there's this one up here, too. There might be another one. Oh, yeah, then there's. That one.
Listen, talking about the hill eroded. And getting washed away because that.
No idea.
It's down there.
Yeah.
From Dean Park down to the river.
Yeah, but when you look down from Dean Park, along Dean Park, that river is down.
Okay, yeah, maybe that's.
It's quite a bit down.
Okay.
So. But I don't think that happened. Past few years. That's probably been happening for the past hundred or so years.
Yeah, a long period of time, yeah.
So that one identified in the um, implementation matrix. And it was assigned to the Highway Department and Parks and Recreation as um, the responsible departments. And uh, it's a high priority and it was anticipated to be a short term but ongoing um, thing to keep an eye on. And then possibly.
Yes?
Okay.
Enacted Community Preservation Act.
Yeah, so the Community Preservation Act, there's a small surcharge on everybody's tax bill. And then we can use those funds to buy land or renovate historic buildings. There's like. A set of things you can do with that money.
Yeah.
So the problem is, I don't know.
So that ain't gonna happen because, yeah.
It's, so it's anywhere, I think, from three to five percent.
Anytime, yeah.
You settle at five percent, and then you can add that to the ta- and then you can use the money.
Anytime you talk about raising a tax for anything in this town.
Yeah, I, yeah, so I don't know.
Yeah, no.
Okay, so I mean, Jane, you can keep that there, but I, I don't know about the feasibility of getting that passed a town meeting, so. I mean, it's a.
Unless you wanna see the last time of any of us here on this board.
Although maybe, you know, in this document is just say what it can do.
Yeah.
What, what things can we do with the CPA, you know, with that money?
And this is just recapping recommendations that came out of other studies. Um, seeing we'll be doing the zoning update, we wanna, we might wanna take some of those into consideration as part of the comprehensive update.
Alright.
They do think we need to focus a little more on, um, scenic roads, though.
Yeah.
Cause we do have a lot of scenic roads in this town that are not identified and that are absolutely beautiful roads and.
They need to be protected.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they do.
Sounds like a road trip.
Yeah.
But yeah.
So with scenic roads, Jane, are there specific things that are protected or can we come up with our own version of protection?
The state does have some model language, but most towns will vary at some, uh, to meet their needs. So there is some, some, um, wiggle room for you to work with.
So I guess that's important.
How do we wanna protect them, right?
Like, what?
What would be?
I get mad because on my road. Um, we have the rock walls.
Yeah.
That are all there. And the road's all dirt road, but we have the rock walls on both sides. And I've caught people going out there. And taking the rocks off the walls and throwing them in their pickup trucks because they wanna bring them to their house. So they're disassembling the rocks off the rock walls to steal the rocks.
Okay, yeah, that's not good.
To, to put them somewhere else.
To put them somewhere else. So. And I'd hate to see the rock walls, like, taken away. Because.
Rock by rock.
Yeah, rock by rock, yeah. Truck full by truck full and.
Yeah, yeah, that's not good.
And even in the solar, one of the things that we were told them is you don't touch the rock walls. The rock walls need to be left.
Yeah.
So. And that's in other roads, too. They have the beautiful rock walls that are there, that were there hundreds of years.
Mm-hmm. So Jane, on page eleven, under zoning bylaw comments and recommendations, there was supposed to be an attached bylaw document? That includes more specific comments and recommendations?
Really? What, did I not send that?
No, it was not attached. I mean, these are good.
And recommendations, but I didn't see the rest of that.
Okay.
I can send that out to Laura just about right now?
Okay.
It's even listed under the appendix on page fourteen, Existing Zoning Bylaws With Comments Added. So that would really be interesting to.
It was such a large document that I kept it as a separate document.
Okay.
So you basically go through the whole zoning bylaw and make comments, huh? I mean, that's.
Oh, yeah.
That's great.
Page by page, line by line. And some of the, I just think that it's easier if you're reading the comments right with the text of the document rather than. Having it in a separate place and you're having to switch back and forth. So the ones that are in the report, you know, some are specific, but I would say that they're more general in nature where the ones that. Um, are in the actual bylaw document get very specific. You know, if it's a grammar error or um, something that's, uh. You know, it could be a state agency that has, uh, changed its name or comments on changes to, uh, the marijuana laws in the state. Um, or accessory apartments, which, um. If any of you are interested tomorrow morning, uh, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities is having, um.
Join the meeting.
A webinar on, um. Accessory dwelling unit regulations, so, uh, that's, that's, they finally come out with draft regulations. But when I get them, I can forward them to you as well. Um, but we are recommending that communities do have an ADU bylaw. So.
I would like to see the comments on the marijuana, on our marijuana.
Cause I was reading it in preparation for tonight, and I find it extremely confusing.
Well.
All the terms and it's just like, I don't know if it needs to be that confusing, so.
We wrote it.
What?
We wrote it.
No, we didn't.
What, our bylaw?
The marijuana bylaw.
Oh, oh, oh.
Not the solar.
Oh, wow.
Solar is good, no, the marijuana.
Yes, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe you.
Some changes over the years, uh, but there have been several changes, um, especially with the adult use allowed now.
Yeah, we've done really.
Changes, yeah.
Okay.
I think something else I noticed is divi- dimensional heights of structures, too. I don't think we have anything on there saying a building can't be taller than this.
Oh, I thought we did, but I don't know.
We do for.
Maybe in the village?
Yeah, I think it is just the village.
Cause remember the, the woman who was gonna do the, um, apartment above the West Warren Post Office? Wasn't there talk about she couldn't go any higher or?
Did certain, yeah, yeah, Donna, yeah.
Well, no, I think it was more because it was mixed use. She was utilizing as a mixed use, but also doing it as a, um. A living apartment and the dimensional requirements were too small.
Right, but she couldn't go up.
Right.
So I, that's why I thought the height.
But we, we told her to get an engineer, that's why.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, there was that. Nowhere.
It's like, well, if you're gonna do something, you need to have an engineer.
There was nowhere.
Identify that you can even do that.
She found out how much it was gonna cost.
I, I think her issue was the occupancy. The building inspector would not allow that area to have more people living in that small space. It's just a ratio. Of the area of the lot to, you know, how many.
Number of people.
Living. Doors could be there.
But I'm thinking about like. If we have a dimensional requirement saying a building cannot be more than four stories. You know, so we don't have like. I don't know, a commercial building come in like, I don't know, Amazon or somebody and say, oh, we're gonna put a thirteen story building right here in the center of your town. And drowned out everybody else. You know, when that absolutely wouldn't fit in a rural town. You know, but they're like, well, if we get the land requirements, we'll just make it really, really tall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jane, do you remember, was there any sort of height?
I can check right now. Um, yeah, as far as the height of buildings, it's typically the fire department that has. Strong concerns about that, depending on the type of equipment that they have.
That's, that was the other thing with the mill complex and the ladder not being able to touch or reach certain areas. Cause we only have small equipment here.
Right.
But I think we need to have something in the bylaw or codified saying you can't go over this height. Because somebody could come in and say, well, doesn't say I can't do it.
Right.
Right.
And they could challenge it. And we won't even have the equipment. To, to save anybody if it came to something like that.
Yep.
Well, the schedule of dimensional requirements, section four point two, has, um, either thirty five or forty feet depending on. Uh, which district, uh, you're in, whether it's rural, residential, village, district, um, and then also the type of use. Uh, there are some, um. Footnotes for things like cell towers or wireless towers, yeah, for wireless towers within each of those districts.
Well, what was the section you were looking?
It's, it's, uh, four point two. Looking at it right now. It's a, the schedule of dimensional requirements. Maximum height is in.
Okay.
All of them.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, we got it.
Oh, yeah, wireless.
I just seen that as a footnote when I was going through here.
Hmm.
On her report.
Right, the commercial area, they can have a building built higher than a hundred and fifty feet.
No, that's minimum lot frontage. Thirty five feet.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're right.
Some of the terminology is, um, things that I'm not familiar with. Like, I don't know what side layout of the highway means.
Where's that?
It's in section four point three, under special dimensional requirements such as yard regulations. Um, or dimensional regs for two, three, or four family units. Um, the context it's used in is in the village district, each single family dwelling shall be setback at least twenty feet from the side layout of the highway. And at least fifteen feet from other property line of the lot upon which the dwelling is situated. I didn't know if it meant like the front lot line or.
I think they mean the roadway.
A roadway?
Right, but the, the edge of the roadway, I guess, maybe, right?
Right, but it's a side layout of any highway.
Just the front setback.
Yeah.
To the road.
Yeah.
That's also mentioned up here, too, side layout.
We should probably. It's probably something we should change there, because that's not clear and.
Yeah.
We don't have a highway going throughout, well, we do, but.
I would just say public way as opposed to highway, right?
It, it should be.
Road.
The property line is parallel to the road, twenty feet offset, because your, your, your offset is from the property line, not from the road.
Okay. Okay. And wouldn't you measure things from the center of the road? Cause you never, you know where the center is, you never know where the edges are gonna be.
It's where your property line is.
That is a Jeremy Olson thing and that is a whole nother thing.
Well.
Because where the roads, where you think your yard is.
Yeah.
Is it where it is.
Might not be your yard because it might actually belong to the town and there's a right of way going through that.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, for example, at my house, you see there's a, there's a big rock wall holding the road. And but that looks like my front yard. It's not, my property is.
On the other side of that.
It's, it's even closer to my house.
Yeah, okay.
So the ba- the setbacks are, are measured from your property line.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, yeah, so Jane, you know, when, any update of language like this is good.
Yeah, and so if something wasn't clear, I added a, a note in the, the right margin just to say we might wanna revise this so that it's easier to understand.
Yeah, okay.
Good.
Because of the train plan.
Can't understand it, then the residents probably won't.
Yeah, right.
Think we're good, right?
So I don't know if you wanted additional time to look over the comments, um, and get any more questions back to me before I finalize the document, um.
Yeah, I'd like to.
The bylaw with comments. I was kind of excited about that.
Okay, yeah, I just sent it to Laura. I, I am sorry if I forgot to send that sooner. It was supposed to be included as part of the attachments.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we. Little meeting on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to after we review that.
Right.
Okay. Very good.
Alright.
Alright.
Um, do we wanna set a date or we would just wanna see how things?
Uh, why don't we take a look at the document first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause we could review that and review this again.
Okay.
And then set up a date.
So probably sometime in January, right? Yeah. I think we're gonna have, probably end up with one meeting in December.
Okay.
Oh, no, it is December.
It is December. Where the hell are you?
Okay, so this may be the meeting and then, uh.
Yeah, January sometime.
Yeah. Yeah, so sometime in January, maybe the second meeting. That'll give us time to look at this. So tentatively, like the second meeting.
Okay.
We usually have two months.
Another item on the agenda you wanted me to listen to?
There was the section for hazard, hazard mitigation plan.
Yeah. So do you.
So do you wanna?
I can hang out in the background here to listen in.
Okay.
Okay, alright, we have to, we have.
Thing on the, uh, agenda and then we get to that unless we wanna move it up or?
No, because we already have it scheduled, so.
Yeah, okay, alright.
That's fine, that's fine. I'll just hang out in the background here unless there are any questions.
Okay.
Thank you, mom.
Alright, great. So now we're on to ZPT Energy Solutions LLC, so we just need to talk about, um, project completion. we just need to talk about project completion, what that entails, have we, is everything buttoned up? And what do we need to do to approve the project? So, um, Laura sent out the decision.
Yep.
Along with some of this other stuff.
I think we have to schedule a walkthrough, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to do that.
So we can't make any decisions on this till we, it's nice we have the documentation, but we gotta go do a site walk, review it.
Yeah, there's.
We should have the building commissioner there.
Yep, yep.
And the fire, fire chief.
And also Beals and Thomas, who's our peer reviewer?
And conservation.
They've already been on site.
So they've already.
And they've signed off on it.
Okay.
So they're all set.
Okay. So we need to. Yeah, we need to take a look at it.
All right. So, um, yeah.
It's, it's gonna be hard doing a site walk now because we reached winter.
I know.
So it's kind of a bad time because now the ground's covered in snow and we can't see
Yeah.
anything underneath.
Conservation was able to see it like maybe a couple of weeks ago, so they were okay with what they saw, but, yeah.
No, we'd have to schedule that then.
Mr. Chairman, what is the biggest concern of this project? To close it up?
Yeah, at this point, we're looking to close it out, so we just gotta wrap up a few things here and then.
There's no big concerns?
I think everything, I don't think so, I mean, you know, we'll do the site walk. Yeah. Um, I would like to have Beals and Thomas just look at the, Pete, you gave us as built, right? This is what this plan is?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
So just have Beals and Thomas do a review.
Yeah. Make sure everything is submitted that we need. So just going through the, um, so Pete, do we have an updated operation and maintenance plan?
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's, nothing's changed?
That's right.
Do you, do you have final approval from National Grid? I'm just going through the, uh, the approval document here.
Yep, so we have ATI from National Grid, which is authorization to interconnect.
Okay.
So the dimensional and density requirements, that was part of the settlement. Where are you with the Richardson's on that?
So we have an option with them to get an easement and that easement will be used to present to the ZBA to get a variance.
They don't have it.
All right, so you're gonna tidy up that agreement, get it all done, and then go to the ZBA?
Yep, yep, we're on the agenda for ZBA on January fifteenth.
Okay, all right.
And as far as you know, that keeps their land in chapter sixty-one A.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, um, so in the permit decision, there's this emergency services. Does the fire chief and the police chief have the O and M? That it's electrical schematic, instruction manuals? Have you supplied them with that kinda stuff?
Yep, nothing, nothing's changed from, you know, when we did this years ago, we, we got final sign off from fire.
Okay, and they have.
Of all this stuff?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
In case something happens, okay. I had Laura check. And, um, we do have the decommissioning bond. That was done in like twenty nineteen or something, right?
Yes, I believe it was twenty nineteen. Received and developed it.
Okay. Um, there, there is a Knox box on the fence?
Yes.
Okay, and fire has, fire and police have those codes or whatever?
It's, it's not a Knox box, it's a double lock on the chain.
Okay.
All right. Jim, as far as you know, Pete, are taxes current and paid?
I believe everything's up to date.
Okay, I was gonna, Jim was.
On that, okay, but that should be.
Jim's not on, no.
Yeah, that's fine, I, I talked to him. Did you file an illicit discharge statement?
Yep, we did that prior to construction.
Okay.
And, um, your SWIP paperwork, is that? Because I don't know, let me see. I don't know, have we, I don't know that we've received any SWIP paperwork from.
From, for the planning board?
Yep, Beals and Thomas was handling this, the SWIP paperwork, we were using their reports as that paperwork.
Okay.
I think what we, okay, we can ask them, I think we just wanna have copies of those then, I mean, that's like the final condition here. One thing I forgot to ask you, Laura, is, so we're gonna have Beals and Thomas on the site walk and then look over everything to make sure it's all set? So do we have any idea what their funding is for the peer review account?
The peer review account is kind of co-mingled?
Yeah, I know, that's, yeah.
I am not sure currently of who has how much in that.
Between conservation and planning.
Um, between, so my understanding from speaking with accounting is that all of the planning peer review funds are in a shared account.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so I can request a detailed report from the past couple of fiscal years, just because this year's been
Yeah, that would be helpful.
No motion so far.
Yeah.
So I can ask for detailed reports for like fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five, just to sort of tease out who's got what in the, in the coffers.
Okay. All right, so if we need to fund that, Pete, do we go through you?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so I guess, when do we wanna try, well, we're gonna have to, let's try and do something in January and we're gonna have to schedule everybody, so.
I can do Thursday through Saturday.
Yeah, you're good at the end of the week. So Laura, you and I can, let's talk this week, because you're gonna have to get Bill, have to get Beals and Thomas, and then all of us, and anybody else, oh, the, probably Adam.
Yep.
Yeah, for.
Maybe Jerry, so we'll try and get as many people on this as possible.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the whole gang.
All right, so Pete, so we're looking at sometime in January, once we can get everybody together.
Okay.
Just try to do it for Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Yeah.
In that timeframe.
Okay.
Seventeenth, eighteenth. Okay.
It depends on the weather too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it will.
Because if we can't see the ground, we can't do the
Yeah.
Walk.
Okay. All right, so, I don't know, Pete, do you have any questions or comments, anything?
Nope.
Okay.
Anybody else?
No, I'm not.
Okay. All right. Okay, so I, uh, I guess we'll be in touch.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. All right. So now we're on to, Jane, if you wanna come back, consider approving a regional D L T A, District Local Technical Assistance Grant to support the inclusion of a hazard dam section in the hazard mitigation plan. So this came about, this is kind of a new thing that the Fed is requiring hazard mitigation plans and, um, it looks like it would cost about five to six thousand dollars to do. And so Sarah said that they were trying to put together a regional grant with a bunch of towns. And they would apply for the grant for all the towns together and it wouldn't cost us anything. So the question is, do we wanna basically join into this? And if we do, then we just need a letter of recommendation or, you know, that we approve this.
Okay.
And select board has to do the same thing.
Okay. I don't see the reason why we wouldn't wanna do it.
Yeah, so this will help us get it done, add it to the plan. It'll be a grant.
It won't cost us anything.
Yeah, they'll do it with a bunch of other towns, so.
Sounds excellent.
Good for me.
Yeah.
Excellent.
So.
We actually have two dams down there, right?
I don't know.
We have one down here.
Right.
But there's another one going towards Brimfield. Somebody was telling me about, which I didn't even know about.
Oh.
And apparently it's has never been really dealt with.
Don't know.
On what, on, but on the, it's not on the Quayborg then, right? Something else?
No, it's, it's, um, if you're going.
Oh, I can think of our Beaver.
Going past.
That's what, that's what I'm thinking, yeah, I don't know what else would be down there.
Because I, I remember driving by, it's past, past the elementary school and they're like, oh, yeah, the old, the dam is over there, the old dam. I'm like, what dam?
Brooks Road?
Maybe on Brooks Road.
I'm like, what dam?
Yeah, there was a mill over there.
Yeah, there's a dam over there.
Inside, yeah.
Yeah.
Which I didn't know about.
I didn't know, it's.
Yeah.
It's on the, yeah.
Yep.
Well, anyway, yes, I think we should do this.
Okay.
And find all the dams.
So, um, can someone make a motion to, to approve?
I guess to approve entering into a district local technical assistance grant to support a hazardous, hazard dam section in the hazard mitigation plan.
Is there a second?
Seven.
All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufran, aye.
Ed Longigan, aye.
Drew King, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye. All right, that passes.
Cool, did you find it?
So Laura, we'll talk also on this.
Think we are.
We just need a letter saying that we approved it. Maybe we don't even have to talk, we just need a letter to CMRPC. Um, I can send you her email if you don't have it, Sarah. But just like, you know, on December ninth, at a, you know, at an open meeting, we approved entering into this.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
I've written plenty of those.
Okay, good.
If I can interject, um, I can send you more information, Laura, it's, I can't remember with D L T A if it's a letter of support or a letter of commitment that they're looking for. Um, but I can send you the details and, um, the physical development committee who reviews the applications for D L T A funding really likes projects that will help multiple towns. Um, seeing it's a regional planning agency, they wanna see, um, the money that they're approving um, help more than one town, so I, I think it's something that they would be happy to support.
Okay, excellent.
That would be great, thank you, Jane.
And, um, send that to me and then I can send that off to, um, because select board has to do it also, right? I mean, that's what Sarah said. She said.
I can double check on that, yeah.
Yeah, she said.
Board and select board, so. Yeah, if, if they don't need to, then that's fine, so.
Okay.
Ultimately, I think they have to.
Verified with Sarah and a copy for what I can know.
Okay.
Great. All right. Minutes, November eighteenth minutes?
Drew and I were absent.
That is correct.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the November eighteenth meeting minutes.
Second? All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye. Ed Longigan, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye. Minutes pass. Bills and payroll? Did you give us, oh, you did give us something?
I did. I just already done the vote when I can give you more in.
Let's see here. Bill and payroll.
So the bill is for just making sure, yes, so it is, um, two invoices from O'Reilly, Talbot, and Okun, uh, Lot Three and Lot Four Geo-Technical Engineering Services for the month ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The first invoice for Lot Three is two thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. The second invoice for Lot Four Services is three hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-four cents.
Is there a motion for that?
Sid, move.
Seven.
All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufran, aye.
Ed Longigan, aye.
Drew King, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye. That bill is approved? And then what do we have? Oh, that's O T O.
And then the payroll is just the signature for the personnel files, I believe, I have, I believe I've already been paid for this one. So it is just approving the payroll submission for the planning part of, of my hours for the pay period of November seventeenth through the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, uh, totaling four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-two cents.
Sid, move.
All right. All in favor?
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufran, aye.
Ed Longigan, aye.
Drew King, aye.
Richi Hacker, aye. Payroll passes. All right, is that it for bills and payroll? I think so, right?
Yes, it is.
All righty. New business?
The letters.
I wanna go home.
It's old business.
I know, we had a lot on this meeting.
I'm not sure if it's new business or old business, but those, the letters that go out to all the solar companies that they need to.
Oh, so that, we do that at the begin?
I think, and then January first and, and it should be in the files somewhere.
Okay. So we're sending out letters or, well, we, we as in you are sending out letters.
The planning board is sending out letters?
Yeah, just basically verifying phone numbers, addresses, current owner.
Emergency contact.
Emergency contact, blah, blah, blah.
And they have a certain amount of time to do it and then there's another letter and then there's another letter.
Yeah, so, yeah, like Drew said, that should be, there should be old letters that you can dig up and there should be a spreadsheet of all the owners of the solar.
All right, yeah, it's just sort of the annual contact verification.
Yeah, exactly.
There should be a reminder that they need to have that posted on the gate too.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because that's a problem for the fire departments.
They can't get a hold of.
They can't get a hold of anybody, they call a number and that person doesn't own the
Yeah.
the place anymore and they haven't owned it.
Right.
Four owners ago.
That's a new letter, isn't, isn't there a blurb about something like that?
I don't remember about that.
I thought there was.
I do remember that they have to, but that's a good thing to put in that letter.
Yeah, just like, you know.
Needs to be updated if it's.
Please remember to keep your signage updated with current owners.
Yeah, I think there was a blurbage in there, but I'm not sure.
There might have been.
Blurbage?
Blurbage, it's a new word.
And if there's.
It's a new word.
Mr. Chairman, may I have your permission for this miss? I need to leave for a family matter.
Oh. Uh, is there a motion to let Derek leave?
No.
Sorry, motion fails. All right, have a good night.
I'll make a motion that he has to stay with the rest of us.
Everything's good.
All right.
Thank you.
Take care, Derek.
Okay. The, the other thing too is, I think somewhere in your vast computer files, there should be a The, the other thing, too, is I think somewhere in your vast computer files, there should be a spreadsheet or two that has the peer review amounts, like the dollar amounts. I was thinking that, um, somebody previous probably did that, because that, putting it all in one bucket is not a great idea, but that's.
Probably did that before sending the check on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're, they're all supposed to be separate accounts.
Yeah.
They should be, but they're not.
I
So I don't know.
I presumed they would be, and learned different.
See what you can dig up. There's, is, is something there somewhere.
Yeah, hopefully somebody did create a, I mean, that was the plan at one point, is to create a spreadsheet to keep them all separate. So, see if anything exists, and if you're feeling ambitious and nothing exists, it would be great to create one.
For someone who has an English degree, I weirdly love the budgeting stuff.
Okay.
I learned that about myself, so if that doesn't exist.
Okay.
Well, shortly.
Have myself a little party.
And honestly, I mean, right now, for, um, peer review fees, it would be ZPT, uh, Beeman Road. I think that's it.
That's it, that's all we have.
I mean, it could be Copart. I mean, if we have extra money from Copart, we probably should have given it back by now, I don't know. So I don't know where that stands, and I don't know if there would be anybody else, right?
I can't think of anybody else.
Because really, we had peer reviews on solar sites. And then we had Copart.
Right.
And that's pretty much it, and we only have really two solar sites left that are in like a process now, everything else is done, so.
Yeah, is the, is Beeman Road, is that the agile?
Agile.
Agile, like a, like a.
Agile.
Agile.
I will learn how to pronounce that.
I like agile.
Pick your favorite pronunciation.
You're like, there's like six different ways that are all equally valid, if you've never heard.
Yeah.
Beeman Road.
But it's only Beeman Road in Westbrookville.
That's true, it is, yeah.
It's Cutler Road Extension in Warren.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, I was like.
That's true.
Okay, a project of many names. Okay, old business, any old business.
The Pepsi truck.
Yeah.
No way.
On the scenic road.
Yeah.
Yeah, nope.
Didn't they just move it?
No.
I thought they pushed it back further.
I don't think so.
What was this?
The Pepsi truck.
They didn't move it. It's sitting there.
And there's now.
No, I thought they, it went back further.
Now, a road that goes back in there, and there's a boat back up in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Storage.
Google Earth, yeah, they put the road in, and they turn around.
It's in Chapterland, and there's not supposed to be anything on that Chapterland.
Actually, that's a future marina right there, because as the seas rise.
Yeah.
He's got the first spot.
It's like buying property in Arizona.
Yeah. Future waterfront.
Future waterfront.
Future waterfront, right there.
That's awfully high.
Well, that's what's gonna happen.
And people left, if those ice caps melt.
All right, comments and concerns?
Boat probably has a hole in it.
It's time to go home?
Yeah.
No, we have to re- arrange the next meeting.[1691.40]